At this time of my call, the meeting has to go through the order place. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic which stands for the nation. If everyone would share to sign the visitors' guest list was back on the back table. That will proceed to approval of the minutes from the February thirteenth executive session and board meeting.
I move to approve the minutes from the February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three executive and regular board meeting.
I second.
So noted and seconded to approve the meeting minutes from February thirteenth executive and regular board meeting, all those in favor, she can probably say aye.
Aye.
A opposed sign. Motion carries. Prioritize agenda.
So I think we may go right down the line except for one thing, we're gonna ask. We're gonna ask that Mr. Dyer go first, both with his elementary report and his safety report because he seemed to have gotten into a fight with both a post hole there and he lost. As you can see on the top of his head, so he would like to go early. And then closing his way at home, which I have asked him, as a matter of fact, I asked him not to come at all. And he refused, he wants to be here though, so. Anyway, that's, that's, that's my plan when we get there.
Okay, sounds very nice.
Yes.
Right.
Yes, our safety officer wants to talk about it.
Okay, so then we will start with superintendent's report, Mr. Dyer.
Well, like I said, I'm gonna have Mr. Dyer go first, if that's okay.
Okay.
And everybody please be reminded, you need to come up to the table and speak, so people online. Thank you, Ben.
Hey, guys, thank you so much for being a comment, and I really appreciate it, good evening. So I will start off with Cloverdale, and just really want to say a lot of great things happening at Cloverdale. Kids are, but you kind of read the report, we hit our academic stride, kids are really doing a good job. We kids know the expectations, they know the procedures, and we're just learning right now. This is actually my favorite time of the year, just because where kids are really taking hold. And when we're writing, we're reading, and we're just working through all the rotations, and it's just, that's a wonderful time to be, that's what I always think. And it's just really, it's, it's just really a good time. One of the other things is, we've been working really hard this week, last week, we had Dr. Seuss Radio Cross America Week, where we had different people come in and greet our kids. Every, every morning, we started the day off with a Dr. Seuss book, and we talked about characters and plots and and the purpose behind reading and writing and why authors write, and so it was just a great week. It also came ahead at the end of the week, Mrs. Cave or dressed up, or cooked, dressed up as a cat and hat, and it was really cool to see her dressed up, and she made green eggs and ham, she read Green Egg to the kids. And it was just like the ultimate elementary school, like, experience, like, this is what it's all about, you know, it was really cool to see her do that. And, and that's just another, Mr. West or our custodian, he read, our IAs read, it was just really cool to see a lot of, a lot of that. This week, we have Cloverdale Week, which is a spirit week, we have Juggin' Bond on Thursday, and then we have an Irish fan coming in on Wednesday to celebrate, we're not Irish, but we're celebrating all the things that are Irish and green and clover, and different things like that. So we have a traditional Irish band coming on Wednesday, we have, what else we have going on? We have pie day, which we're celebrating math, so we're doing like a Celtic clover harp with circles and pie, the kids get a piece of pie, that's gonna be a lot of fun. So, and that is mostly, I'm kind of bubbling through this a little bit, but that's Cloverdale in a whole, you guys have any questions about Cloverdale? Okay, yeah. And on to safety, so I guess the reason why I wanted to come today, that's safety, I only get to really present once a year around safety, and I know a lot of times questions around that. I kind of made a list in the report of everything that we have done, what we're currently doing in the future kind of holds. And if you have any questions about that, the number one thing that I wanted to highlight that I really want to make sure that we are improving on is how we train our staff and what does that look like. And so I believe on April, was it, Mo, next week, next week, that's right, I have a lot of different training that I'll go into, but next week, Kelly and I are actually going to San Bernardino, and we're going to the I Love You Guys Foundation. And so what that is, is that's who we use our incident response training protocol, that's who we use. But we're gonna be retrained in that, and then also what that, how we want to bring that training in to train our staff and our children, and really get a comprehensive approach to make sure that everybody's trained in how we operate emergency situation. This also includes reunification, so after emergency happens, how do we unify, reunify children with their families, and we just want to make sure everybody's on the same page. Along with that, there'll be other things, we're going to PACE on April thirteenth. And that talks about trips and falls and other work-related injuries, and so I'm gonna work with Don, also the other admin is like, how can we especially train our staff in safety issues? That is just not a video, I don't want, I don't, we don't want to be just clicking through a video, because that's not the most meaningful thing. How can we make training meaningful for our staff here at NASTA? Because that's one thing we've been kind of talking about this last year, is sometimes training is a little dry. And we just wanted, again, we just want to make sure that people really understand the importance of it, and they and they have the opportunity to ask questions and I'll answer them as well.
Brian, do you do monthly safety training meetings for the staff?
I wouldn't say monthly training meetings, we do, we have month, monthly safety meetings.
Monthly safety meetings?
Yeah, so that's when all, like, the VPs, all their, Don's there, Joe's there.
What's the primary concern that you hear, is there a, is there a trend or one area of concern that the the staff as far as employees have for safety issues? You know, is it trip and fall stuff, is it back strains, is it, what, what's the primary?
Ball, that would say the number one thing. I think the biggest thing that we see is a lot of times staff members are trying to do too much, and they try to get in a hurry, and they're moving too quickly, and they just trip over a sidewalk, or they trip over a crack in the sidewalk, or they cooking, they take something out of the oven too quick, or there's some different things like that, they, they're moving too quick, and they cut their hand. And that's what we kind of see a lot more of.
Okay.
Yeah. But, would you say, Don, would that be the number one thing? Yeah.
Yeah, and injuries by students.
All right, yes.
It was just a big deal from Salem, Texas. Is that primarily special ed, or is it everywhere?
Yeah.
Primarily special ed?
And I do have to, we had a kind of update this last two months, I think, in, in that, but it was kind of laid dormant for a while, it was a bigger issue. And then I think coming, it's coming back at the pandemic, just kind of wrapping up, one thing I do have to say is especially the staff at Omsfield Junior High and Life Skills Special Education Room, they are phenomenal at making the adjustments coming back, there is a protocol where like somebody does get injured, they meet, and they talk about, hey, we're helping me make sure that this will not happen again. So big shout out to all those programs, because they do a good job with that, because it, it does happen. But our biggest thing, how do we respond to make sure that doesn't happen again, Brian, they do a nice job at that.
Good, good.
Any other questions, Mr. Dyer? Okay.
Thank you very much. If you guys have any other questions, if you have any questions about safety or anything else, please don't, don't hesitate to reach out, I can answer any of those, those kind of things. But yeah, thank you for doing well. Thank you, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dyer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. Just wanted to do a quick update, we are able to move forward, we're, we're gonna move forward anyway, but able to move forward probably more swiftly now that Oregon Department of Education has approved our use of our ESER funds, ESER three funds for both the outdoor play area at Omsfield and the modular classrooms here on this campus. So somewhere in the middle of last year, out of the blue, the federal government decided that with the ESER three funds, ESER one and ESER two, we've spent, there was we're gonna be hands-on with that, suddenly ESER three funds, there were a lot more strings attached halfway through. So we went ahead, Scott and I worked together, and Mr. Dasher and I worked together, and we were able to put that information out to ODE in typical fashion, they said, hey, we'll get back to you in two weeks, a month and a half later, I called, and they gave us the green light that we're going to do it, there was another way to get there, but this is a more direct way, so we're moving forward with those projects as we speak. We're getting things lined up for this summer, so that's fantastic. I mentioned last time that we continue to work on the budget, I'm sure Scott will talk more about that in his report. I'm also bringing you tonight the calendar for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. With regard to that calendar, please be reminded that we are required to get input from our certified staff about the calendar, and my understanding is when we got that information back from the fair association president, about almost seventy percent, like sixty-nine percent of their staff chose this version, we had a couple versions out there. And so we feel like we can go ahead and move forward with this calendar this evening, so people can start to plan for the future, so we get to the calendar part, if you got questions, feel free to ask. And then finally, would like to thank a couple people, Joe Luley. As you guys know, for years, Tom Level, when he's here, he goes out and checks roads. And when Tom is gone, now that he's retired, we had to have somebody else do that, Joe Luley, and I noticed here that Mr. West, Owen, is here tonight, sitting front row, he's one of our maintenance specialists. Volunteer to go out and run roads for us. And so, which initially in December sounded fairly okay. But we got to, right to the end of January, in two weeks, really February, that seemed okay too, but since that time, it's been about every morning. So three forty-five, four o'clock, these guys are up, they check in with us along with our bus company. So we're getting really good reports back, and we're able to almost get it right almost all the time, so they get it right when they call, the problem is that somewhere between five o'clock, when they start to talk to me, and seven thirty, the roads change, and we see that happen a lot, the temperatures have dipped, but these guys have been fantastic, so I really like to say thank you to these guys, Owen's been fantastic, I just really appreciate hanging in there and helping us, so, questions on my report?
I don't think so, thank you very much. Okay, finance directors report.
Well, you have my budget in front of you, I know that you have been very busy night to night, and so one of the things that I'm going to spend some of my time on is going over the audits. So it might be helpful if you find, find it in your board packet to go along, because I'm gonna reference some page numbers as I talk a little bit about the audit, so I'll give you a minute there. On the financial report, nothing, everything seems to be going well, we did get that double payment for the state school fund, we missed that payment in January, and it came in in February on time. You see that reflected in there, so you see that we're back right on task for coming in a bit higher than budgeted for revenue and a bit lower than budgeted. So nothing new to say there, and then of course, budgeting process, we're working right now off of the governor's budget. But we have every indication that we're gonna see a little bit of a bump in that, hopefully, we're still waiting to hear, I sit on the legislative committee for the OASB group, which is a group of business managers. And we haven't heard anything yet, but everybody that I've worked with, and my peer groups at similar-sized districts are usually, you know, budgeting a little bit higher than governor's number. We're still staying with the governor's number, because I'm kind of conservative in that way, I've been around enough to know that. I don't, I don't make any predictions when I'm asking level legislature. Okay, so let's chat a little bit about the audit. So now each year, just to be very clear, each year, we contract with an auditing firm, and they do four or five things for us, and we call that the audit. This includes single audits of federal programs. This includes the management discussion and analysis that I prepare based on the financial statements. The biggest part of the audit are the opinion that the auditors place upon the creation of our financials, our financial statements. This document is our financial statements. This is also the minimum level that the Oregon Department of Education, Oregon Secretary of State, need to call our audit complete. So typically, the auditors come here and present to you, they've done that for you, those of you who've been on the board for years, they've done that numerous times. And you have the opportunity to ask them questions. We are still planning on them coming, once the other four objects of their audit are complete, we're working with them, currently, my staff and I are in constant communication with them, giving them what they need to finish that portion, the outlining portion of the audit. But what I'm going to do here is present the financials to you, explain to you what you should be looking for in these, and answer any questions that I can. The reason why we're doing this in ahead of time is because some of our financial grants require the audit presentation to be made to you in what they consider to be a timely manner. And so it is due for you to hear and receive the audit in a more formal way. Any questions on that? Okay. So the most important parts of the audit that's in your packet are pages one, two, and three, that noted by I, 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 and I, I, and this is the independent auditor's report. And in that area, this is where the auditors express their opinion on our financial statements. And in the second paragraph, you can see that it says that we do a good job of preventing our financial position clear. So that's a plus and a thumbs up. On page one, the audit, is our statement of net position. Now, the net position is essentially very similar to the owner's equity in a private balance sheet. And it's essentially the net position is the assets minus the liabilities. Without going into a lot of detail about why that matters or how that comes in, essentially, if that net position number gets bigger, our school district is growing, growing financially, it's becoming a bigger, more financial robust organization. If it's shrinking, it's retracting. So last year, our net position was six point one million dollars, this year it's ten point three million dollars, so it's an increase of four point two million dollars. So we're growing substantially. And that's asset, and that includes everything from buildings minus what we owe on them, the whole, whole pit completely.
Could you, could you put your finger on a line or two that was the lion's share of that growth? You know, if we were to line this up with last year's, which we don't have, can we see where the biggest factors are that attribute to that net gain?
I can, if you look on page six on the audit, you'll see a detail, a detail about all the different areas. And one of the things that you will see is, you will see an increase in revenues and a decrease in expenditures. And my sense is, is that one of the reasons why you see that big of a shift on page six is mostly related to timing of grant receipts. Okay, so in that sense, it's a little bit, you know, it's a little bit squishy, it's not, you know, a huge seventy percent growth in our district's financials. But it's still growth, and significant growth of that. Um, so that's on page six, going back one page, is the statement of fund balances. And when you look at those, you see five different fund balances, special revenue funds, general funds, capital projects funds, all of those, just know that those are all rolled up, because we have twenty-seven special revenue funds. Okay, so all of those funds, we have thirty-three funds total. So all of those twenty-seven funds roll up into the special revenue funds category, so that's a very, that's a five thousand foot, that are fund balances. And you can see that our overall fund balance has increased by one point eight million dollars over the last year, so that's, that's a pretty significant number, and again, a lot of that has to do with grant expenditure timing. Pages seven through thirty-eight, huge number of pages, has a lot of detail about all the notes and how auditing firms come to determine the value of potential liabilities ten years into the future. This is some of the driest writing ever made, and even for me, I have a hard time getting through all of that stuff, so just a fair warning. Pages forty-five to forty-nine show roll-up funds relative to the budget, so you can see kind of what we had predicted and what we actually came in. Page fifty, I believe, shows how much money we paid to heat our buildings, for some reason, the Department of Ed has been having this in our, reported in our audit for at least two decades, how much money it costs to heat our buildings. It's one page, one full report. And then finally, on page fifty, is the summary of our grant funds, which happily show no material weaknesses. It does show a finding on page fifty-nine, which is kind of curious, because we got that finding last year, and we addressed that issue, it had to do with timing of bank reconciliations and review of different banks reconciliations, we did work on that, we fixed it, we thought we had it fixed for this year. But I don't know if they just saw the finding again and replaced it there, but we'll get to the bottom of that before the end of the year. So that's essentially my, my audit presentation to you, I'm not as eloquent or as knowledgeable as it, as our regular auditor, which would be, I think. But it does give you a pretty good overview of not only how our office is doing, but how financially we are doing this. Are there any questions that can answer?
The one question I have is, we seem to have run into a problem with this auditing firm, where do we stand for next year?
Well, we have, we, we have a contract for them, we haven't done our engagement letter for next year at this point. We're still in a situation where we're trying to decide whether or not we can go out for new auditors or stick with these guys.
Okay. But as I understand, there's not a whole lot of them out there that do that.
No, they're, that, that pool is shrinking significantly, and some of my peers that have gone out for bids are, are not getting any of this. So, yeah, it's, it's certainly a concern. I will say that there are a number of districts, if you remember, we actually got special dispensation from the ODE to allow us to get our state school fund back, there are still at least seventeen districts where I know that are in the same spot that we were two months ago, have not received their state fund either.
Oh, my God.
It's, it's a significant issue.
Wow, and that's just gonna keep growing.
I think it is, I mean, we're gonna have to do something, I think ODE is going to have to budge in some way, I'm not sure if we're gonna see a legislative fix during this legislative session, but but I am very cautious in terms of trying to make a decision as to which direction to go, and while I'm not necessarily very happy about it, it's also definitely no, so.
Right, that's true, okay, any other questions?
You mentioned that you're talking to them on a very regular basis now, does it seem like the communication is getting better?
I would say it is, it's, it's, but yeah, they've asked us for a number of items, and we provide those items, and then we don't hear from them first few days, and that's how much. I, I fully expect the entire five portions of everything to be completed and done by April and May.
When is the deadline for it, or has it already passed?
Well, there's a variety of different deadlines, there's a federal, a formal federal deadline of June third.
Okay, and we're on track right now to make that?
Yes, that's what we're shooting for.
And if we don't make that, is it come back on the district or on the auditors?
On the auditors.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, because we've done everything that we can, and, and are, all of our contractual obligations with them have been fulfilled.
Okay. Okay.
Oh, and we haven't, we haven't made those, so we haven't, we're not, we're not doing that, your, your principal director won't write a check.
Awesome.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Director of Education report.
Thank you very much.
Sorry.
I didn't, I just stand it up, stand up anyway, I just come in. So really, I just want to, you have my report in front of you, and really, I just want to spend some time talking about some things that you can take action on, which are pretty significant. The first two are curriculum, math curriculum for secondary, both high school and junior high. As you know, we've been taking the entire year to teachers' committees to really scout over the approved math curriculums for secondary, and the high school and junior high have both picked those, I put that in the board report, you'll need to do a resolution on that if you agree. Again, again, multiple piloting with students, talking to families, calling other districts around us, working with publishers, going to the ESD, they've done a really great search. The first one is Singage for high school, and that's a, to the tune of about, I don't know, eighty-six thousand, I think it says. But the issue is, it's a seven-year contract, so you, before, you would just buy textbooks, and then as long as they lasted, then you could use them. And so now, we are still gonna get hard copy textbooks, some districts go a different way, but we feel like that's like a, like a consumable book, a workbook. We still feel like that's the great way to do it, but also, we get digital access, and that's really what's grown exponentially in the last few years, is digital access, where every student and teacher has access on school, at home, individual learning, just like we've done with iReady and elementary math, how each kid gets programs that are designed, targeted just to their weaknesses, so there'll be digital access for seven years, but the hard copy textbooks, Singage is one of the high school picks for everything from, from pre, pre-calculus, calculus, statistics, financial algebra, algebra one, geometry, the whole suite of math classes in the high school. Then in the junior high, question? Yeah, it's at eighty-seven thousand, that's a flat fee for seven years, it's not a per-year fee. Correct. And it's, and it covers nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. Correct, so, yeah, it, it's a, we, I tried to negotiate a decent bargain for us, and if you split that out over these seven years, it's, it's, it's very competitive for sure. Then at the junior high, same thing, it's EdGems, which actually is an Oregon-based publisher, Shannon McCaw, who the junior high has been using for many years now, and I like, I would say the vast majority of middle school, they only go through middle school, use, use EdGems, and the price is there, again, seven years for the hard copy digital access, online access, so. Last one, which I, which I will bring next month, but just to let you know the progress, the biggest lift up to this point is gonna be the elementary English Language Arts Free, and that's just because it's so big in terms of the core curriculum, and then the reading, reading materials, and the phonics materials and stuff like that. So again, the team has done an incredible job, met after school countless nights, involved tons of meetings, and, and they've narrowed it down to benchmark, the reason I haven't brought that to you was, one, that was just decided Wednesday, but two, I want to get a better picture of what the price is gonna be, because there's two or three different pieces that need to be purchased. And I really again want to, want to thank all the elementary principals and the teachers and the reading specialists that helped out with that, that was incredible. In fact, we landed on one that we think is the best, but in the beginning, when we just started looking online individually, we wouldn't have picked that one. And as we started to dive in, we found some strengths and weaknesses, and we really believe, I'll bring that to you the next, next board meeting, but they've settled on benchmark, I just have to get some price codes, I'll bring a final copy, for questions on the curriculum piece? Yeah.
So what happens after seven years, I mean, historically, school districts have books that were published twenty years ago.
Yeah, so when there was zero money, then we did skip textbook adoptions all the time, like, well, I'm sorry, hell, teacher, you're gonna have to just use the one we have from the fifties, and no, it doesn't make any sense anymore, and, and thankfully, first of all, as a district, since the big downturn, we have not had to do that, and then and then with these additional resources that we're gonna talk about tonight, we've been able to offset some of those costs, so the state has a textbook adoption every seven years, so if you stay on track, you don't need to worry, I mean, assuming we still have resources for textbooks. But worst-case scenario, that is one of the reasons the math department, who have been here a long time, and some of them remember that to have consumables or just digital access, and then something were to happen, and you don't have the money to purchase, then we would be in trouble, so we'll always have the hard copy. Secondly, like, look at ELA, English Language Arts for, for elementary, well, we postponed a year, so what we did, we went back to Wonders, which is what we have now, and say, can we just buy one more year, so you can kind of piece it together, but, but the reality of it is, if you plan ahead, and I think we're in great shape now, every discipline has a textbook adoption every seven years, and the next one coming up after this is science, so.
Is it odd that we have three of them coming up at the same time?
Well, it is and it isn't, I mean, we did elementary math out of order a year early, this should be math, but we did elementary math first, because if you remember, we had no math curriculum at the elementary, basically, so we said, let's go ahead and do that now. So we, so, so really, high school and junior high did English last year, and elementary did math last year, so this year, they're just swap. So yes, this is the, these are the biggest ones, there's a significant investment, and the number you see there, it pales in comparison to the So yes, this is the, these are the biggest ones. There's a significant investment and the number you see there, it pales in comparison to the one I'll bring next month, unfortunately, for, uh, ELA for the entire district for K five. But after that, it's a lot smaller. I mean, there's still science adoption and, and elementary has some science, but it's not every kid, every class. So, so this, this next one that we finish up with, uh, thankfully, we're in great financial shape, we just heard. Because, uh, that's definitely the biggest lift. Math and English are the biggest lift for sure. Questions?
So I'm gonna ask one more.
Yeah.
When we're vetting these, do we have any outside influence on that vetting process or is it purely internal as far as like the teachers and how does that work? Do we have the sales folks from these companies pushing it on us?
Uh, no. So what happens is, I know we got a busy, busy thing. And so if anybody else wants to talk more about this later, but the, the short answer is uh, a committee of this, Oregon Department of Education goes through all the publishers. Let's say there's twenty-five of them. And they say, which ones fit the Oregon standards? Then they narrow it down to seven or so, or eight. And then now we take, uh, teachers and specialists and some parents and really scour what the approved ones are. Uh, also at the W E S D, they house a lot of the samples and people can come and look at any of those. And so then once we kind of narrow down to our top three, then we do invite the publishers in to, uh, not so they can make their sales pitch, frankly, it's so we can really grill them. And our teachers, uh, don't, don't, don't hold back in, in a respectful way, but they, they ask tough questions. And that's part of the reason why we have made some changes. Then as we get down to those top two, we also put it on the website, let people know, hey, if you're interested. It, it's kind of like funding in Oregon. It used to be just district funded. So, right? And so everybody in the, in the district was super invested. Now, it, and so now it's state funded, right? This is what you get from the state. Well, curriculum is a little bit like that. I mean, you get some choices, but, but OD says, here's the ones you can pick from. We still get some selection, but it narrows it down. Yeah.
Okay.
But we've, we've done our due diligence and had lots of outside stakeholders give input to you and still can. And, uh, and we've learned from other districts who have not done that so thoroughly and then had some significant backlash from the community for whatever reason, they didn't like what was picked. So I think, you know, I, I mean, not everybody's gonna be happy no matter what you do, but I feel like we've done our, our due diligence for sure. A lot of work from you guys. So.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. The next piece is really the integrated plan. So, and we'll go through a quick PowerPoint and, uh, uh, I want to go through it pretty quickly. Two reasons. You have a copy of it. It's required by OD that we do this because you need to say, uh, we will approve Cascades Plan, Integrated Plan. You don't need to know the, all the budget, although I do have a draft budget. I will send you after this. But what you're saying is we agree with the priorities that the team has set. And frankly, it's not a lot different. If you know, we've been doing, S, what does that mean?
This means, hold on a second. It's under five D in your report. Just jump down to reports. Like, what is this? All right, yeah.
I've got it. Okay.
I just think there were a bunch of people.
Okay, you're good.
Should I stay up here or sit down?
No.
Okay. So, so you know that we have a student investment account, right? Uh, uh, corporate tax, that's how we've done a ton of great things for kids over the last few years, SIA. That's continuing. And the, the, the main difference is high school success had a pot of money. They had to do a hundred pages of reporting. SIA had a pot of money, a hundred pages reporting, CTE, all these other things. The bottom line is OD is collapsing them all and instead of, uh, six twenty-page reports, now we have one two-hundred-page report. So this really streamlined things, but not really, but, but that's the gist of it. So, so there's a small team of us. We're gonna, the reason I'm gonna go through it quickly is because again, you have a copy. Secondly, we're not changing a ton of what we do. We've already established what our priorities are, right? We've already established lost learning, extracurricular activities, tutoring and enrichment activities after school, extra counseling resources, both art counselors and like Trillium Support Services. Uh, we've added, we've added, uh, um, additional math coaches. We've added, uh, uh, RTI in math, for lack of a better word. So a lot of those, we, we want to increase the social emotional health of our students. So we're not gonna, we didn't spend the last three years really diving in to what the needs are of our students. Literacy support. We didn't, we, and to all of a sudden completely abandon that and go the other way. But the state is, um, combining things and reporting it differently. And so we needed, we need to jump through this. It's a significant amount of money. This, this, the, uh, student investment account is almost two million dollars and, uh, the high school success, which Tony Walisa has managed fastly and Lisa Iverson before that is about eight hundred thousand dollars. So that's a significant chunk of money that's allowed us to do incredible things for kids. And we're gonna continue to do the vast majority of those. But we will do what we're supposed to do through OD. As soon as I figure out. I do it. Okay, we're done. Like literally what just happened? Okay, so, um, yeah, because I know, I mean, I know Chief Taylor really wants to get a first eye view of this, so I'll make sure it's out of the way. Uh, I'll go, this, this is why we're doing what we did. I just pretty much explained that. Um, again, we're sharing right now just what we prioritize as a district, not every single detail, which there will be every single detail. We need to submit an application. It's due March thirty-first and it is very detailed. But for now, what are our broad themes? What are our outcomes? What are, what do we prioritize as a district? And, uh, if you guys say, well, that's not, that's crazy. We want to do something completely different. Well, now's the time to speak up. Okay, so, uh, like I said, a, a lot of districts, including us, said, why are we re, uh, duplicating efforts? Why would Tony Walisa have to put all of our data out there and, and how our students in poverty are doing and our special ed students are doing? And then she has to justify that, how to spend her money. Then I would do that with SIA. Then we do that with the School Improvement Plan. Then we do that with the Early Intervention System. All these six pieces were multiple times doing the same work. So the idea was that we would combine the processes. Everybody with me so far? Ready to back up? All right. So these, again, you have this, you want to talk about it, you want to email me, you want to call me, you want to come in, break some coffee and we'll go over all this together. But the biggest two are the high school success, which is about eight hundred thousand dollars. And the student investment account, which is, um, which is, uh, which is, uh, almost two million dollars. And it's for the biennium. So you'd have that almost three million dollars for, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four and another three billion, a little bit more for twenty-four, twenty-five. So we're basically estimating what we need to do for the next two years. They really want a four-year plan, which all with the team, uh, create and also longitudinal goals for the next hundred years. But, but for now, we're focusing on the first year. These are the other plans, Everyday Matters of Dependence, Early Indicator and Intervention Systems. What are we doing to catch those kids right away? Small grant like seven thousand dollars. These two are the biggest ones. Uh, there's a description of each one of those plans, which you're, you're supposed to see according to the Department of Education. But I just explained those. If you have questions, CTE is a big part of what we do, but we, the reason we don't manage that budget ourselves is because we're part of a consortium. Sixteen or eighteen districts go combined with the W E S D. And we pool all our resources and that's how we use our CTE dollars. So we don't have to count for those directly, although that will be part of it. It's just done at the regional level. Here's our planning team, uh, uh, in terms of, okay, first of all, we've got input from literally hundreds of people. But in terms of like, who's gonna write up the report, who's gonna deal with the finances, who's gonna double check things? It's this five, these five. Uh, I, but, but we, the main difference that, uh, OD is holding us accountable for, even though we did a great job last time, is getting stakeholder input. And so Tony Walisa has done mostly the secondary. I've done most of the elementary in terms of talking to all the elementary staff, going to PTO meetings, getting input from student teachers or, uh, parents that have tax students, getting input from parents who have a special ed students and a variety of kids who sometimes get lost in the shuffle. So we really have done a great job. Now, to truth be told, the same things they told us a couple of years ago are important to them, are the same things they're saying now. And so ultimately we'll take all that data and all that input, what worked last time, tweak some things and create, and create a system again that looks, you know, fairly similar. These are the pieces that are required to, to do that, uh, PD engagement I just mentioned, and then equity lens, of course, you know, again, how are we meeting the needs of the kids that may slip through the cracks if we don't do that? Um, and then there's some long-term, long-range goals that I mentioned, which we'll do in conjunction with OD. It's called a code development process. They take our application, tell us what they love about it. Also tell us what they don't love about it and then we make a final plan. Uh, again, what we're doing is not much different than what we have been doing. Some of the priorities are academic support, social emotional support, literacy in the science of reading. Some of our, uh, schools, all of our schools have really invested in, especially as we're adopting new ELA curriculum. Not just, hey, let's help our kids read, but what's the research say about, um, helping these kids be able to read better? Uh, engagement enrichment opportunities before school, after school, on the weekends, uh, we have, we have kids, uh, invested in, uh, outside experiences, outside cascade. At least we started that at the high school level. Now it's all throughout the elementary and these are things that we're gonna continue to do because we know they work. Uh, we're gonna continue to recruit, retain great staff members, especially now, right? There's less good ones around. We've done some cool things. We, we, we've increased wages. Uh, but we've also need to provide other things, support, mentoring, things like that are also in the budget. So once we get these people, how do we make sure and keep them? And so that's something that we pride ourselves on and, and we want to continue that. And then of course, a big chunk is the college and career readiness, which is, is, is a whole other piece that, um, Tony Walisa can answer questions about if you want after, after we're done. If there's any time left, if the sun hasn't come up. Okay. So we have to set some abroad goals and these are a few of them that we will have chosen, which again, are, are really related to what we've done in the past. All students at grade level in math and ELA, further narrowing the, the learning gap, uh, especially for students who are farther behind and improve the graduation rate. We have a stellar graduation rate, but it's not so hot in some of our at-risk populations. A poverty, behind in credits, a special ed and, and some of the groups, uh, that's, that's, that's the target. How do we help, how do we help all those kids that maybe could improve so they're reflected in our great graduation and freshman on track rate? And, uh, equitable access to CTE. We want to make sure that, um, not just your typical students are involved in CTE and student engagement, but we go out of our way, which, and the schools are doing a great job in engaging kids who typically would. I mean, I see Mr. Woodwell get on a, a bus with kids, uh, like once a week, uh, to go somewhere. And, um, I know there are kids that typically don't get opportunities like that and that happens in every district, every sphere. Uh, this in terms of the money, which I already mentioned, big chunk, right? Almost three million dollars. Here's some of the things that we have been doing that we're gonna continue to do because they work. Uh, math coaches and supports in, in, uh, the elementary. That's been incredible. Uh, additional counseling, uh, after COVID, but it just seems like it's here to stay. Kids have lots of social emotional needs. So we've added extra counseling, uh, both in the junior high and at the elementary level. And also we've part of a trillium for more kinds of deeper issues. College and career coordinator, freshman on track coordinator, literacy coaches is something that we're looking at, that, that would be a little bit newer or at least how we do it. Uh, we, we continue to offer the Family Resource Center and Support Advocates. And then PD, um, they have, it's a big chunk. We've got thirty, I put in my report, thirty-five, maybe more teachers that are going on their own time, somewhere to get trained on how to best implement teaching and learning in their schools. And, uh, that's been a huge blessing for us, but also new curriculum, right? This math curriculum we just talked about and this new ELA curriculum we just talked about, that is, that doesn't just happen by accident. That's a tunnel. That's a big lift. And in case you didn't know, we also are getting a brand new student services system. Right now we use Tyler Sis. It's dying. And so we're gonna have power schools, which that means teachers and parents need to learn a whole new way to interact with grading and getting access to their students' information, which it's way better. But again, these are things that take a lot of training for people to feel ready. That first, uh, part in, before school starts in the fall is going to be a critical time to make sure parents and teachers feel supported. And so some of those resources will go to that. Then after school and summer, we've had teachers here all summer practically in the last two years. So. Uh, how the state understands success. You can read it on your own. And, um, also we need to basically, here's another piece that I said we do with OD. We, uh, look at how do we, how's it gonna, how's it gonna impact our scores two, three, four, five, six years from now? We have to estimate. Of course, it's a guess. Like what is our third grade reading scores? What are our third grade math scores gonna look like in five years? What is our graduation rate gonna look like for our underserved groups? What is our freshman on track score gonna look like for our underserved group? So, uh, with that team and in conjunction with the E S D and OD, we'll set longitudinal goals out as much as six years farther out. All right. So what happens next? Thankfully, we're near the end. The first is the application window, which I just mentioned. So, uh, if you guys say, yeah, you're on the right track. And then we'll take all that information and we'll finish the application, which says, this is why we believe this is our strategy and this is what we're gonna use the money for. And this is what we think our outcomes are gonna be. And we, we submit that by March thirty-first to Department of Education. And then OD reviews it. They put together some other committees, which is OD people, some business people, some W E S D people and review it again. And if we're approved, we'll get our money, uh, sometime in late June, early July. If not, there's a back and forth. Again, this kind of code development process. It's new to them too. All this is theoretical. Nobody's turned their application in yet. We didn't even get to see the application until like a couple of days ago. So, so, uh, but assuming everything goes as planned, everybody will get access to their resources and then that's not the end. Then there's quarterly reporting. Every three months, you have to justify what you've spent and how, and whether it's having any impact you said it would be. Which again, is great. There's some accountability there, but it's also a big lift everybody. So, I think that's it. All right. Everybody go home? No, not really. So questions about any of that? I tried to go through it quickly, uh, both because I know you guys are familiar with our plan already. We're doing a lot of the same things. Uh, but also, you know, you have access to both that PowerPoint and any of us anytime. If, if you need more information, that, the question, the only caveat to this is we need a resolution at the end of tonight that says, yes, we're, we're on board with the integrated plan as a whole. And then we'll bring more details as it pushes out and finish the application. So. Questions?
Any questions right now? I think we're good right now.
All right.
Okay. Thank you. Is that right?
Yep.
Mr. Rassus.
Evening, folks. I, I do, you have my report in front of, in front of you. I do want to be brief. You're gonna hear from the rest of the high school, uh, head team this evening. So, um, in front of you, uh, the only thing I really want to highlight is, uh, Matt mentioned we're moving to power schools and that is allowing us to import all of our current students, all of our teachers and all of our classes into that system. So it can build a new schedule for us. We are updating our course catalog. We, as with COVID, it got neglected. Um, we've added a few elective classes we're bringing to you to show you for a pilot status. Um, some of them we're gonna ask for you to approve to put them into the course catalog permanently. Um, but we'll make some adjustments. And so we're excited about sharing it with you as we grow slowly. And we're probably between fifty and seventy-five students more this year than we were last year at this exact same time. So we're going to be asking, um, uh, one of the, one of the benefits of growing is you've got to have more electives. You, you have more sections of science and health and social studies, but you also have them more electives. And so we're gonna be asking teachers to create some electives. Um, we've done that with our CTE programs. We've done that in our different, uh, departments. We're also gonna do that and asking them to come up with some new things. Um, we started sports broadcasting recently. Uh, we're gonna be looking at some additional potential healthy classes. We're looking at, um, different electives that we can have kids. One of the benefits of the trimester system is kids can take lots of electives because they can earn thirty-one credits in four years. And they'll only need twenty-five and a half to graduate. So there's lots of opportunities to take classes and we're looking forward to doing that.
You said you put that up to the teachers to kind of create a new?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll ask for ideas or we'll propose ideas. I'll say, hey, what do you guys think about this? And I'll, you know, find something interesting and I'll throw it towards them and, uh, you bet. Electives, there's a broad, broad leeway when it comes to teaching electives. Um, T S B C lets you, uh, if it's an elect, for elective credit, just, you know, teaching, I think you can just about teach any elective. There's some regulations, restrictions, but, um, lots of, lots of, uh,
Is there a course, I mean, back in the day, you used to get a catalog that taught you all activities. Is there still a catalog available or is it all online?
It's all, it's digital. Um, we are putting it together. We're gonna be able to share. We're going to be able to share with our freshman orientation parent meetings coming up. Eighth graders will be hosting the families of those kids that are going to be in high school next fall and we'll be sharing that with them.
And online.
I don't know if we're going to print it for them or show it to them online. I'm not sure, we haven't decided that yet.
Okay.
But the counseling office is working on revising it and figuring out the date. But teachers need to revise some of what they do in the classes, a district description for each course and what credit they earns and what department it follows you to.
Yeah, because there's so many electives now that didn't used to be there that the kids get lost. I mean, it's like, you know, you could do this and like, no, no. So, okay.
True. CTE programs have brought more pathways and there's, there are prerequisites for some of those courses. So we've got to be able to explain that to those kids as well. But yeah, there's lots of great opportunities, other things.
Okay, any other questions?
Can I ask real quick about the power schools?
Absolutely.
So that's going to go into play in next year in September?
Yep.
And have you had much time to touch it?
We are, the counselors and I are doing two days of training this week, Wednesday and Thursday. That will help us get prepped to import all of the coursework, teachers and students in the system. And then we'll begin building the master schedule. We'll get student requests from kids. We'll find whatever program they use most time, most likely will be online.
Right.
And kids will go on the computer and select the classes they'd like to take for electives. And then we'll collect all that data and then another four weeks, we're going to be back up with power schools again. And they'll start building our master schedule.
And is the, is the staff being receptive to this new game plan or is, you feel like you're going to have much of a challenge there?
There's, it depends on where we go. If, if we, if we let the computer build the schedule and say, here you go, everybody, we're going to force it on top of their heads, then we're going to get pushback. But we obviously have to flex. We have to, we're going to have to take whatever the computer spits out and tweak it and make it work for our, this building. It can only understand so many variables.
Right.
And so obviously there are tons of different things here. There's distances to walking, there's years to, you know, we offer this class this trimester, but not this one. There's a pattern, so it accounts for a lot of that. And you know, if, if the computers system is, or master schedule is not good, then we'll use our format and do it all by hand. And that's basically what we've been doing the last 15 years is we make small tweaks of the big board in this Williams office. And it just sits there and we make tweaks here and there. And it roughly has not changed, literally it's 15 years. We move a period here or a class year, but we're going to see what the computer says. Maybe there's a better way to do things.
Good luck.
I just caution, just because I was involved with the bus situation this year where their new system was supposed to transport all the kids from computers to the bus systems. And you know, when you have one bus with 87 kids, four buses with 20 kids and it takes them two and a half weeks to get the bus routes. I hope the bugs are worked out of this one before school starts.
Carol Delamar has already moved all the kids into the new system.
Okay.
So the kids are in.
Okay.
Now we'll start moving courses in. So we'll see, yeah, we'll see for sure.
Okay.
That 85 and a science person is going to work.
You're right.
Two and a D person is going to work.
Exactly. You'll get it all worked out. I just remember that. Okay. Any other questions?
No questions. Good job.
High school of principals, assistant principals, report, Mr. Woodwell.
So just first off, I just want to say how blessed I feel to be working at Cascade High School, I've been there a long time now. And you know, as the assistant principal, I mean, a lot of what I deal with is discipline and you know, one of the good things about working here is 95% of the kids here are doing the right thing mostly every day. And so part of my job is, you know, I try to spend a lot of time celebrating the positive things they're doing. You know, in my board report, you'll see that, you know, I grade checks, I have teachers just write positive postcards so we can send them home to parents. And we do a drawing for gift cards. Each term I have teachers recognize one student from your class, it could be a top student, it could be a most improved student, be whatever reason you want to do. And we'll buy them lunch at the end of the term. And you probably, if you walk in, you might see their poster up on the wall, just with a brief quote as far as why they got selected. So I really try to create that positive culture by celebrating all the great things they're doing. And one of the other things I've been doing a lot this year is I just try to, opportunities to take these kids places. You know, I took kids in August, I took them to Palace Books to visit that and to the zoo. I took about 50 kids there. I took kids recently to the Blazer game when Miller scored 71 points. I do remember kids that. I took kids up to Omsi, to the Marvel exhibit. All three days of the playoff games, I organized the Ruder Bus to get kids on there, just so these kids could have these opportunities they don't normally get. Because I know this, I mean, I really do feel we owe it to these kids because of what they experienced during COVID. They lost out on so much that I think, you know, when we have this chance, when we have the funds, we need to take advantage of that and give them these opportunities. You know, this Friday is a great day. I'm taking 50 kids to Topgolf and we're going to go up there, they're going to experience that. In mid-April, we're going to the OSU USC baseball game. And I'm going to take a group of kids there. So I just, you know, if kids are doing the right thing and if I can give them these opportunities, I think, you know, I need to take advantage of that and do that for them. You know, because I just, I really do appreciate that they are doing the right things all the time. So I just want to celebrate that as much as possible. Some of it, I mean, while I think we have a great school, I think there are some issues we are trying to remedy. One of them, and this is just a chronic issue, I think, just talking to other schools, is there is an issue with vaping in schools. And we are trying to address it. You know, we, we have recently, you know, piloted having a vape sensor put in bathroom, in the bathroom to see how that would work as far as detecting it. You know, we're trying to, you know, and that would alert us to when something is happening in the bathroom so we can address it with students. You know, ideally it'd be connected to a camera so we could be able to see if, you know, we could get a picture as they're exiting the bathroom. So we can know who it was, so we can have that conversation with them. And not so much just to, you know, as a punishment, just as an opportunity to teach and, you know, explain to them, you know, you know, there's going to be consequences to this. But like with my job, every time a kid gets in trouble, there's two pieces to it. There's one, there's the consequence piece, but more importantly, it's that you learn from it. And how do we learn from this? And I know this is a chronic problem and we're trying to address it. And one of them is the vape sensor that we're attempting to do. We may end up doing it in all bathrooms, we may not, just depends, you know, we get a feel for it if it's working well or not. But you know, just overall, I mean, things are going great. I, you know, I think we're doing a lot of positive things, but you guys have any questions for me?
I have a question. The kids that you're taking on these trips, is it a reward system or can?
They do have, they can have referrals, you know, at the time. And you know, I do, I mean, I don't hold, and if they're missing school, they have to be passing their classes. Now I have to sign up a week in advance, so I have had to bring some kids in. I said, okay, no, you're failing fourth and fifth period. You have three days to get that grade up and then you can come. And they'll, I mean, very often they'll get their grade up because, you know, these trips are free. It's just, but I do ask that, you know, you're doing the right things in the class and you're passing classes, okay? Because we're not going to have you do this without having those things and so.
So are these kids that are recommended by staff or they?
I just send it out through Parents Square. I make an announcement and I just say, guys, if you're into something that you're interested in doing, you know, please sign up. You know, a lot of it's first come, first served. Some of them were more popular than others.
Okay.
You know, and like the Topgolf one was very popular. And I have told kids, you know, if you've been on the last couple, I'm going to give some other kids an opportunity to go. And so we've done that. And you know, I said, there's a waiting list. I'll, I'll tell kids, you know, you gotta get your permission slip signed, please get it in a couple of days because I'm going to give your spots to somebody else. If you can't go, that's fine, but we just need to get it. But you know, probably the best compliment about all these trips I've had is, you know, I was coming, we, the Flemish game, the champ, not the state championship game, but the last league game. I came in on the Ruder Bus and I'm coming in with the kids and I saw Mark Steven and he's like, you just got here? I'm like, yeah, I was riding the Ruder Bus. He's like, you rode the Ruder Bus with the kids? I was like, you're the only administrator that I can actually say that might be underpaid. Yeah. Nice to see you, my dear sister. So it was very, it was great. Anyway, but it was awesome. The kids did great. We, all three days we went on the Ruder Bus, I, you know, so, and we got 30, 35 kids, more kids in the game. A lot of kids drove themselves, which was great, but you know, it was just a way to get kids who I know not every kid can drive in the game. But they all want to celebrate it and cheer them on, so. Any other questions? I'm over here once a year, guys.
I know.
You know, that's it.
That's why she's so excited and have so much fun is you get to do all this stuff all year long, you know? I appreciate everything you do.
It's great.
Thank you. High school athletic directors report, Mr. Rice.
Good evening. I started last in November, we're wrapping up our fall sports season. So we officially just wrapped up our wear sports season. Obviously some good news on the boys' basketball side. Had some pretty good success up at the state championship. And so it's back to back state titles for the boys' basketball program. Our, our, our girls' team had a great regular season run. Swim team competed well, took some kids to state. A wrestling program ended up taking 17 kids to the state tournament this, this year. Coach Lovell shared on that last day, we actually hosted the district meet here. And he shared that the highest number that he'd ever taken was 15, so this year we took a couple more than that. So, so that, that was a big, big success there for the winter. A couple of other things that I have down, down there on the report, some things that we're going to continue to focus on this year was that student athlete portion of the, or I should say, the student portion of the student athletes. And the OSAA basically releases academic all-state teams at the end of each season. The winter sports have not been released yet, but as soon as those come up, I will be able to share those. I'm sure that I will have those in June when, when I come back. And then the other piece there, we are continuing to do year in and year out, individual coach evaluations. So for each sport, at the end of the season, I kind of sit down with that coach and go through, you know, positives, thoughts or, you know, ways we might be able to increase participation or improve the experience of that sport as well. Along the same side of evaluations, we also give out at the end of each season for each sport, an anonymous feedback form for each athlete. They don't have to do it, but we highly encourage those kids to fill out kind of a self-report of how the season went, how their experience went. And then obviously I take that information in. Again, it is anonymous for the student athlete, but try to share that information back with those coaches to kind of share some things that kids shared with us. Then again, we do have our participant numbers there. Talked a little bit about our individual sports there. As we kind of turn the page from winter into spring, we're actually scheduled, we're not, they're not going to happen here, but we're scheduled to start spring athletic contest tomorrow. With baseball and softball, we'll schedule for games with the, with the rain that we've had. It's not going to probably go tomorrow, but hopefully maybe by Wednesday or Thursday, there are some places out there that we can get, we can get some games in. So from winter right into spring, I do have a list there of our spring coaches. I do want to point out that we do have three new head coaches for our spring sports. Jason Haskell's taking over the boys' golf program. Taylor Guidos is taking over the girls' golf program. And junior high counselor, Brian Roseau, is taking over the boys' tennis team. And then just some things that I kind of shared for on the horizon, these, a couple of these were on here last time and we're just going to continue to work on those in the athletic realm. Basketball, we'll see shop box installed for, for all teams across the state for, for next year. So we will get those installed here in our facilities. And then some meetings coming up with some folks talking about facilities and some ways that we can improve some things. Questions or comments or?
Oh, that's a good question. So you talked about the student anonymous form, the feedback form. Can you put your finger on any changes that have correctly been made from feedback a student has given on those?
Um, so I think a big thing for me is themes, right? So obviously I've only been here for five, six months. So we, we haven't, I, I wouldn't say that at this point we've had any changes that we've seen in those forms have come to fruition yet. But I think when we talk about the culture that we want to build, maybe not even sport to sport, but in our athletic department as a whole, I think we take themes of our culture. And those are the types of things that I, that I talk to our staff about more than anything else. I'm probably as competitive as the next guy, right? But realistically, like the wins and losses are not what I'm going to judge our athlete experience on. And so when we talk about, if I'm a junior in high school and I'm on the JV team for this sport, how has my, my experience been? What is the value that I have been given from a coach or staff member being a part of this, this team? And a lot of times that's not just about the win, or at least I hope that it's not just about the win. So, so no, I, I mean, just because I, I think just, we've just gone through this for this year.
Right.
I think going forward, kind of getting used to with our staff and having them used to the things that I'm going to bring up over and over again. It's going to be about the culture and their experience, not so much if we won 25 games.
Okay. Yeah, that's fair.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right. Anybody else?
Thank you. Thank you guys.
Junior high principal's report. Have my report and I just wanted to kind of do some updating on numbers. I bragged about I read it and how helpful it is. And my math department recently, they saw how many lessons were happening and decided we need to up the ante because typical junior high kids, they need a bribe or an incentive to participate. And so in the last month, they, if they did a certain number of activities, then they could do an end of the month reward. In that month, in addition to doing their regular assignments, over 1,700 additional lessons were accomplished in grades six, seven and eight. So that was pretty impressive. So on average, kids did three to four additional assignments plus what they were already doing in class. And these assignments are more tailored to what they need, not necessarily also in addition to what they're learning. So I thought that was great. I look forward to seeing how this plays out when the OSS tests come out. Partially because it's plugging holes and also because it's getting our kids used to taking tests on the computer, which is, you know, all of our tests predominantly are, you know, paper pencil. And so this is a whole different, we're all to combine those skills. So I think that would be great. Pentagames is returning for those of you who remember Pentagames. Yes, for those of you who don't know, it's basically math Olympics. Greg has been heavily bringing it back and heavily recruiting our math Olympians. So let me tell you, there's nobody probably more competitive than him to want to beat the outriding school. So it's coming to Cascade. And so if you're looking for something to do in April, come on over, it'll be a great event. How many schools are participating? Seven?
It's usually eight or nine.
Yeah, so it'll be a great turnout and lots of excitement. And I know a few of you have had your own kiddos participate, so it's just a great time. And last of all, this Thursday, we are doing reward trips for kiddos who have, in seventh and eighth, it's all passing grades. Sixth grade, it has to be A's, B's and C's. Sixth grader is taking their group up to the wave pool in North Pacamas. And then seventh and eighth, we're going to divide the Star Cinema and take them split time to go watch a movie. In the spring, we'll find something where we can actually maybe go outdoors, but this time of year, you never know, just like baseball, we're not sure if we could see a field that would be dry anywhere. And then next Friday, the staff versus students' basketball game will reappear and we're super excited. We will not be inviting Brian Dyer to participate, but. Any questions?
Okay, I want to ask a question. On the advisory section, it says each teacher has a group of 20 students to work and bond with for the whole school year. Can you talk about that a little?
Yeah, our hope was for kids to make a connection with somebody all year long in junior high. Sixth graders have their homeroom teachers, but then seventh and eighth, they might have a different math teacher. Each term it's a different thing and there's no guarantee you're going to have the same teacher or group of teachers from year to year or, you know, term to term. So the hope was that by being with the same person who was going over lessons and kind of getting to know kids, their positives and weaknesses, that maybe we can build some on their skills that they struggle with. That maybe we can build some on their skills that they struggle with socially and academically. Oh, this kiddo is always, you know, has a trend record of a, you know, binder where a classroom teacher might not notice that.
So, so these, there's twenty kids randomly assigned to each teacher, if you will, and they're, they're with that teacher for the whole year.
Yes, and our hope is that maybe next year, the teacher will keep the seventh graders and then they'll get new. You know, those will move to eighth grade and then they'll get ten or so new seventh graders to add on, to add to the um, prom, promenade, you know, bonding and. Hopefully that group will know this teacher's, you know, expectations and components and everything.
So do those kids then, they don't necessarily have even a class with that teacher? So how does that teacher make contact with them?
Um, we have a forty-five minute class period every two weeks.
Okay.
So, and lessons are devised, planner checks, um.
So does that mean those twenty kids are with that student twice every two weeks for forty-five minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay, so they're, they've, they've got FaceTime with them?
Correct, yes. And most of them will have seen the teacher, but there are occasions where, you know, they might not have Miss Smith, you know, as our fire director.
Okay.
Does that cover our, that doesn't cover our whole student body, does it?
Um, sixth grade takes care of their homeroom kiddos and then seventh and eighth, yeah, and we literally pull everybody is pretty well. Opportunity, you know, he's on prep that period, you know, everybody's working with the case.
Okay, yeah. Where do they do that?
Um, it, we have the library being taken place, the gym, it isn't necessarily warm and fuzzy and it's a little challenging if you wanna show video, but you know, we're making things look. So, I mean, our building is full and there's not a lot of places to hide kiddos. So I think it's great that they have that availability. No, and it's been working well. Um, last year it was bumpy and wasn't as that. Positive is what we wanted and part of it, the period was too long, we cut it back about ten minutes and that seems to be a better, you know. Not too much, you know, and we provide the lessons that um, teachers are not having to. We used to have our avid teachers create lessons for it. And that was just one more thing that they had on their plate. Now I'm creating the lessons and they're basically being given it, so, and then there's homework. Um, missing assignment sheets that come regularly there, time working on their planners, you know, let's make sure everybody is using their planners and going things out. Organizing notebooks, cause can you hide out the challenge, you know? Organizing five classes and keeping it all kind of in a binder and you know, that, you know, something from September here and. My lunch, you know, leftover cereal bag or whatever it is. We're good now.
Principal's report. Hey, thank you. Um, thanks for allowing me to be here today. On the board report, you will see. I, an array of everything from our mentor program, which is composed of fifth graders to outside Turner. To our academic and attendance data. Uh, do you have any questions for me about any of those aspects of the report? Like I said, it come up there magically, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
So your ecology set that, yeah, um, that looks like it's the new walking track around the school. Is that what it's at? The picture that we have here.
Uh, the picture is of the Turner Trail, correct?
Okay.
But the ecology grant, um, a team of teachers as well as a team of fifth grade students helped. We write that grant.
Okay.
And each grade level will have a different ecology project. Kindergartners are purchasing different compost bins, one that you rotate, one that sits still, and one that has worms in it. And they're going to collect lunchroom compost and see which one breaks down the soil the fastest. As well as which one grows the best plants. So every single grade has a different project.
Okay.
Fifth grade's going to do different water and stream studies, which will culminate in a coast trip, which will be funded by a clear grant. And then overall, we're gonna be involved in a nationwide crayfish study, which is super exciting. Because each grade will have a crayfish trap that's already been purchased. And will monitor the crayfish and collect the data to submit.
They're in Mill Creek?
Well, that is the question, cause they're indicator species. So if there are a lot of those little critters, it'll mean good things for Mill Creek. If there's not, they'll do some further investigation as to why. The old timers say there's less than there used to be, you know, and we will look for the reasons for that phenomenon.
Will they all be though in the creek or will you be?
Yeah, they're going to put up different traps in different places along the Turner Trail.
Okay.
We're unique in that we have the lab right out our back door.
Right.
Yeah, cause I was actually involved in a workshop on Saturday about crayfish and some of the barriers of different schools across. Um, the Pacific Northwest are the transportation to go out and fulfill this part of the grant. But we have it right there. Other questions?
I just wanted to say Lisa that I like the math data that you have here. It looks like the percentages are moving in the right direction. And you should feel really good about that.
Well, our district and I think all the elementary schools are looking so positive. And you know, I'm new to this elementary gig, but if you ask the different teachers. Nobody was teaching a uniform curriculum. It was, I'm doing this, I'm doing that, kind of doing my own thing, cause I don't like the curriculum that was used. And I believe this is the first time, and at least at Turner, that the teachers are teaching a uniform curriculum with fidelity. And we are seeing incredible growth already, having those resources of the math coach, where she not only spent last year training the teachers. But now she pulls out students the way that we have literacy interventions and she works with them with manipulatives and hands-on. I mean, we're not where we wanna be, but I think a solid five-year plan with our literacy and math and we'll get there.
Yeah.
We also have a team of teachers almost completed with year one of their letters training. Last week on OPB, they were pressing our governor to mandate the science of reading in Oregon schools. Cause we're a little behind in that way with thirty-six percent of our third graders well below grade le- grade level. And our district was talking about the science of reading and letters last year when we met to formulate our goals. So I think we're a little bit ahead. And in the direction of where we need to be.
Yeah. That was a question I had. I actually saw a special bit of it with LeVar Burton and someone else about reading fourth grade level, how it's so bad.
Yeah, that, if you remember, if I had a way to spell it, remember that hooked on phonics and they spelled phonics like F O N I X?
Right.
That was a real, a real good sales ploy as to how to not teach reading. Yeah, the kids don't need phonics, they just need to look at the word and figure it out and guess the meaning. We now know, and we've known for a few years now, that that's not correct. Kids need that good phon- phonics foundation. And that's what our new curriculum and the science of reading tells us. And we're doing a lot of phonics at all of the elementary schools. And I think it's paying off, cause we're moving that literacy needle too, where it's eighty-seven percent are either approaching or. Or getting there. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Are the, I am ecstatic about those, the changes at all the elementary schools in terms of student performance.
Right.
Off the charts, awesome. Are your teachers as excited about it, or are they, are everybody just still shell-shocked and exhausted and pooped out from what's happened the last few years?
I'd say the latter.
Okay.
But, but are, well, there's, there's a feeling of dread about a new. Uh, computer program, like, okay, I'm gonna learn a new ELA program, I'm still figuring out iReady and now we're going to go away from Tyler Sis. But I think we do all as administrators need to pause and celebrate.
Yeah.
What is happening, that we really are seeing some growth across our district. And, but there is a lot of exhaustion.
Okay.
A lot of uh, feeling like this was a lot. But, but they're doing it.
Yeah.
And I think in the end, they're really embracing the math coaches and having the math support that they've never had before. It's a good thing.
It bodes very well for our future as a district, if we can just not burn out our teachers.
Exactly.
Thank you so much.
You had a group up of the Trail Blazers also?
We did. I started, I don't know, I started outside Castgate back in two thousand fifteen and we spent together donations and grants and then. Um, OD, we recognized that it was dropout prevention and we started funding it through Measure Ninety-Eight High School Success. But there really isn't funding in elementary, but fortunately our parent club made gobs of money at our jogathon. We made around forty-five thousand dollars, so I asked for ten thousand dollars to start outside Turner. So every grade gets to do something special outside of the school day, and I hope we can expand that district wide. Um, every fifth grade, every fifth grader we do it. Now, now the second, third graders can't wait for their turn.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so something special, so that by the time you leave our school district, you can say, I got to do this, this, and that. Cause you never know what's gonna stick. And most of those fifth graders have never gone skiing. I mean, it's prohibitively expensive for most people. So exposing them so they see what is possible is always the goal.
Nice, so good.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Hey, any other questions? Alright, thank you so much, appreciate it.
So you have several uh, stepping changes in your package tonight that require a board approval. Um, the first one is that you have a retirement and resignation from Jeff Katnoff, so a long-time. Child development specialist at Turner Elementary. Um, then we also have our resignation um, from Matt Thatcher. And he'll be finishing out the school year as the director dead and then he is moving on to bigger and better things, I guess. Enjoying retirement. Um, the third is a retirement from Curz from Terry Moore, she's one of our special education consultants. Um, her plan is she'd like to continue to um, work for Castgate but retire first. And with that, um, you have an amendment in your packet um, to the licensed employee renewal list. Um, Terry Moore was on that list in February to be renewed as a contract teacher. But because she's retiring, we don't renew our retirees. They have to come in as a probationary one.
Okay.
And so that job will have to be posted, she'll have to apply for it. And then we would bring her back as a new hire. So that's why you have that amendment in your packet. You guys have any questions for me?
Nope. Thank you very much. Okay, moved on to five B, so out-of-state trip request for Turner.
Yes, so in the list, of course, um, this is right here if you have any additional questions, but. Uh, the fourth graders at Turner Elementary like to go across the bridge to Port Vancouver, it's an out-of-state trip. So technically it needs to come here. Um, is that one of your OT things or is that just a regular?
It's not, it's a tradition as they study the Oregon Trail.
Perfect. There's the, there's a more complete answer, appreciate that Lisa, thank you. So would like uh, for you guys to approve that this evening.
Hey, school calendar, Stro.
Yes, the fun school calendar. So here we are, uh, this is the calendar that's. Yes, so we've made some changes to it so people can see it. Uh, at first glance, it seems more colorful and maybe a little bit confusing, but as you study it a little bit, it's far more clear than the other one. It's got more information on it. So appreciate Lisa, Jennifer working on this, taking care of it. It gives you some additional days of why they're out, what's going on, that kind of thing. For us, uh, the requirement is we have to satisfy the hundred and seventy-four student contact days, the hundred and ninety-one certified days. Hundred eighty-two classified days that fit into the process. This is the calendar, as I said, about sixty-nine, almost seventy percent of the teachers who responded to the association's request. This is the one they prefer. Um, you're never gonna get a hundred percent agreement, cause somebody would like a longer uh, holiday break and they. Get done later in June, but some people like to be done in June sooner or later. It never quite works out. Um, this is more field I have, I've learned if we end a couple of options out and wait around for somebody to give us uh, responses, that's usually the best way to go. This is the one that was kind of selected. The, the moments that you will notice on this calendar are that in December. We would come back the eighteenth and the nineteenth, which is a Monday and a Tuesday. Uh, every five years, we end up in this boat where we do that, otherwise we go longer in June. So the upside to this is we have Monday, Tuesday, we have to come to work. We then get almost, well, we do get two weeks off. We don't come back to school in January and get an extra day in January, get Monday the first, Tuesday the second, come back on Wednesday, it's only a three-day week. Come back in January, so it works out pretty well. Spring break is always at the same time, it's usually the fourth week in March, usually set by the state. And then we get out on this calendar before uh, that third week of June. Uh, students actually get out on Thursday, teachers are done on Friday, so then we don't have twenty-eight snow days. And uh, which is always awesome, they don't have to come back the following Monday, which is always a motivation as well. So this is kind of the, the, the thing we put together. We also asked our administrators to take a look at that, what they were hoping for, if you noticed in blue. Those are the late start days. If you look in November, there isn't one, there isn't a late start day in November, because we already have a couple holidays in there and an extra day off. Or you have a number of days off. And our administrators were asking for an additional late start in spring, so we can do more professional development to get ready for the following. So we tried to find a little more balance to that. As I said, there is no perfect calendar. We go a little bit longer. Second trimester is actually a little longer by a couple of days than the first and the third, just in case like this year, we have a couple of snow days. Questions?
Any questions? Okay. I don't think so. Thank you.
Yep.
Superintendent's evaluation and contract. Um, the Cascade School Board of Directors has completed the annual evaluation as superintendent Karen Grill. After reviewing Mr. Grill's self-evaluation, assessing his performance in the nine areas set out by the evaluation tool. Established by the board and having conversations with him directly, the Cascade School Board has unanimously agreed to renew Mr. Grill's contract. We appreciate his leadership and longevity in this role. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, five F, Board Budget Committee appointment.
So you've asked last time to, so we, like somebody, uh, somebody who got some names and the name that kind of rose to the top, I called. Stephanie Mulg, who is the Almsville PTC treasurer, has accepted to be a part of the budget committee for Cascade School District. So you now have a full budget committee, as Chief Taylor is here, he also agreed a month ago or so. Be on it, so we're good to go for our budgeting process.
Perfect, thank you so much. Budget Committee Calendar.
Well, that rolls into that, I said, isn't it? So this is, appreciate Mr. Pillar putting this together. Every year we put together a budget committee calendar, uh, so that we have to do some posting of this as well, that's required by law. So it shows you the process, the timeline that we need to use. We'll have an, our initial meeting of the budget committees in May before the board meeting. We'll probably set a couple hours for that, cause we usually run long, we, we're, we're long-lended. Uh, but we wanna make sure we explain everything to you in the process. There is a need for a second meeting, it'll happen until May eighth. And uh, the June board meeting and moreover, we have one, we will have that meeting, that June board meeting beforehand, and then we wrap up our budget. Forward in the next specific. Questions?
No.
Okay.
Update regarding Juul lawsuits.
So I mentioned to you a couple of months ago, I believe, and requested that we join the uh, basically the lawsuits. A joint action across the nation to deal with uh, Juul and two other vaping companies. You've heard tonight that we had issues with vaping, continue to have issues, we are not alone with this issue across the nation. Pete, many of you guys have seen a cigarette in the last couple of years? Is it all vaping?
Yeah, I'm fifteen years old.
Yeah, so we haven't seen it since the vaping started. Now with uh, without even smokeless vape, it's even more difficult. Uh, this is one of the three uh, labs. It was surprising to us that Juul quickly wanted to settle. Uh, the amount across the nation is about five hundred and fifty-eight million dollars. Uh, we will get a, a portion of that based on our size, I'm guessing somewhere between thirty and forty thousand dollars. There's two, still two other defendants that they need to deal with, so we'll probably see more money. Our goal with the money is for cessation programs. Uh, prevention programs like the vaping sensors, things like that we can use for an education as well. So my recommendation tonight is uh, from our attorneys at the W S D, they are recommending that we accept this settlement. So I'm asking you guys on your behalf, allow me to move forward with that process. So the two people sitting next to me here were. wraps up our spring season. Dog reviews all of this information, make sure that we're all. This is the coaching advisor list, just to wrap up for the rest of the school.
Employee recognition, their second trimester.
Second trimester, so these names haven't been revealed yet. All the administrators put in for. For uh, their, their employees to let us know. We go through that process. And uh, we will be getting out a gift card to them as a thank you from uh, the board and myself. For a job well done at Cloverdale. Becky Young uh, was selected. Um, as the certified person at their size, they picked one for, for uh, trimesters. They go back and forth. Turner gets two. Eric Paul Garing, uh, certified and Patty Austin classified. And Armstrong McKenzie Leatherman and Cristiano Griffiths were classified. At the high school, David Bedlock, we heard earlier that the uh. The uh. Oh, archery. Yeah, that's what it is. Nursery process, it's a bow and arrow. And Josetta Jared, who is our uh. Janitor uh, was selected as well. And then in the junior high, Karen Thompson, longtime teacher here and vacates, uh, the secretary, selected as our outstanding. Uh, second trimester employees.
Very nice. Congratulations.
I agree.
Sixty, program reports. Safe in the yard. Public comment at this time, no one applies their public written submissions, so we will go directly to resolutions. Okay. Eight A, resolution regarding chapter.
Be resolved, Cascade Board of Education moves to approve the retirement of Jeffrey.
Caton?
Caton.
Caton, thank you. At the end of twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Second.
The motion seconded to approve the retirement of Jeffrey Caton in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose sign. Motion carries. It be resolution regarding staff retirement from PERS.
Be it resolved, the Cascade Board of Education moves to approve the retirement from PERS of Teresa Moore as recommended by the administration.
Second.
Then moved in second to approve the retirement of PERS of Teresa Moore as recommended by administration. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post in sign. Motion carries. Eight C, resolution regarding amendment to Cascade School District, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three licensed employee renewal list.
Be it resolved, the Cascade Board of Education moves to approve the amendment to Cascade School District. February thirteen, two thousand twenty-three licensed employee renewal list as proposed.
Second.
The moved in second to approve the amendment to the Cascade School District, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three licensed employee renewal list has proposed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose sign. Motion carries. Eight D, resolution regarding Cascade School District draft twenty twenty-three integrated plan.
Be it resolved, the Cascade Board of Education moves to approve the draft twenty twenty-three. Integrated plan as outlined by the integrated planning team.
I said motion.
The moved in second to approve the draft for twenty twenty-three integrated plan as outlined by the integrated planning team. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose sign. Motion carries. Eight E, resolution regarding junior high math curriculum.
Be resolved, the Cascade Board of Education moves to approve Ed Jim's math selection for the junior high math curriculum.
I second.
The movement intended to approve the Ed Jim's math selection for the junior high math curriculum. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose sign. Motion carries. Eight F, resolution regarding high school math curriculum.
Be it resolved, the Cascade Board of Education moves to approve Senge learning selection for the high school math curriculum.
Second.
Then moved in second to approve the Senge learning selection for the high school math curriculum. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose sign. Motion carries. Eight G, resolution regarding out-of-state trip request.
Be it resolved, the Cascade Board of Education moves to approve the out-of-state trip. Request for Turner Elementary fourth grade students to visit Fort Vancouver. Second.
The moved in second to approve the out-of-state trip request for Turner Elementary fourth grade students to visit Fort Vancouver. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose sign. Motion carries. Eight H, resolution regarding draft twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school calendar.
Be it resolved, the Cascade Board of Education moves to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. School calendar as presented by administration. Second motion.
Then moved in second to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school calendar as presented by administration. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose sign. Motion carries. Eight one, eight I. Resolution regarding superintendent evaluation contract.
Be resolved, Cascade Board of Education moves to renew the superintendent's contract based on the completion of the annual evaluation.
I second.
Then moved in second to renew the superintendent's contract based on the completion of the annual evaluation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose sign. Motion carries. Eight J, resolution regarding budget committee appointments.
Be it resolved, the Cascade Board of Education moves to appoint Stephanie Mall to the budget committee, which expires in June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
So moved in second to appoint Stephanie Mall to the budget committee. expires in June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post in. Motion carries. Eight K, resolution regarding budget committee calendar.
Be it resolved, the Cascade Board of Education moves to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget committee calendar as presented. To with. The form of the agreement shall be approved by district legal council. Second motion.
The moved in second as the. The board authorizes superintendent resolve responsibility in school labs. The form of the agreement shall be approved by the district legal council. All those in favor, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Motion sign. Motion carries.
We need to do one more.
I was just saying, I had a hunch. Oh, we missed that. I guess you can't go.
Yeah.
I think along with the same, but um.
It's on the computers.
Right.
It's not on.
On A it is. It's included on A.
It says Jeffrey Caton.
You can amend it if you want, or you can do. Okay. All right.
Well, let's.
Um, let's do another one.
Do a new one, okay. Um, be it resolved, Cascade Board of Education moved to approve the retirement of Matt Thatcher at the end of twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
I second.
Been moved in seconded to approve the retirement of Matt Thatcher at the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I guess you get the right area. Uh, is there any others?
At this time, we'll continue to use a bit of the control location, the designation.
Okay, at that point, we will adjourn. Thank you all very much for coming.